Does that help Sam to look a reference? Whoa, that's, yeah.
Hey. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the City Council Study Session. Our first agenda item is the Urban Land Institute Recommendations. Let's see, we have a summary of Urban Land Institute Recommendations for the city center area. Welcome. Mr. Brad Power is here to discuss this. Do we have any guests?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I am here to present the summary of an exercise that we all participated in last fall, which was the Urban Land Institute's Technical Advisory Panel for the city center area and its environs, starting to take a kind of a generational look outward of how this area could evolve into its 2.0 version after the initial redevelopment almost 20 years ago. So, we provided in your packet both the hard copy of the final report that they gave to us just before the holidays and also the video link to the presentation that the panel made upon completion of their work in the first part of October. I know that several of you were able to attend that in person. Hopefully, all of you have had a chance to look at the video. A little bit about Urban Land Institute. The ULI is a 501(c)(3) organization that's been around a little over 70 years and it's really made up with comprised of the industry leaders that really touch all parts of real estate. So, not only developers, but people who do finance, attorneys, designers. I've been a longtime member, so there's a few of us from the public sector who've been members as well. And I think of all of the real estate-associated membership institutions, this one is probably the most respected in this country. You can see their mission statement in terms of what they try to do for both the organization and the impact that they try to make in communities. As I said, it's founded several decades ago worldwide. It has just over 40,000 members. There's about 1,300 of those members here in Colorado. Colorado has always been very popular with this organization. It's grown immensely in Colorado, particularly in the last 10 years. So, ULI is organized in a couple of different ways. There's the large organization of the entire membership, which is headquartered in Washington, DC, and then there's what's known as district councils. There are approximately 50 of those around the country, a few of them in Canada. I think there's one in Mexico. And that's where a lot of the local and regional work takes place by all of their volunteer members. So, all of their program, they have very small staff here in Colorado. I think they have three or four folks. And most of the programming and a lot of the work is actually carried out by the volunteer members that work through the district council. And the Colorado District Council was the one, and still is the one, that manages their technical advisory program. This has been in place, not only nationally, but here for many, many years. Some of us have served on multiple panels over the years throughout the metro area and that's been a longstanding tradition from ULI in Colorado to help communities with an intensive and short-term look at urban design and urban development and real estate challenges. So, last summer, the district council issued a request for information or a request for interest throughout the state for communities to partner with them on a transit-oriented development technical advisory panel. They were having a conference in November. In advance of that, they wanted to have the opportunity for communities to express an interest to work with ULI here locally around ostensibly a transit-oriented development challenge or issue, but something that would have transit-related impacts and issues. And we thought this area would be tailor-made to take a look at it. So, as I said, the TAPS were coordinated by the district council here. Communities were invited to apply for this TAP program last summer. We put in an application and Englewood and Superior were the two communities that were awarded these technical advisory panels. And as I mentioned a minute ago, this was done in conjunction with that conference that was a regional conference attended by about 400 people in Denver in November. And so, the results of the TAP weren't quite ready then, but we participated. I participated in a panel about this area and its past and its future potential. And the city also had an exhibitor table where we had information, not only about some of our planning efforts, but our economic development programs and other things that we staffed throughout the day at that conference in Denver. The study area that they looked at, we originally tried to talk them into a larger study area that maybe would include the hospital district as an area further to the east. They thought that was a little bit too much to chew off in a couple of days, or chew on in a couple of days. So, we really looked at the city center area, sports authority site, and then the shopping centers between here and Broadway, and then the South Broadway corridor. The hard line there is on the west side of Broadway, but if you're familiar with the report, a lot of the recommendations obviously would extend on both sides of the Broadway corridor. So, that's the geographic area that the group took a look at. In terms of how it came together, we identified four questions that we wanted them to address. And paraphrasing the questions, as I recall, I think, you know, if we have the, on the west side, the light rail station, and on the east side, the emerging South Broadway corridor, what can we do to catalyze additional development and redevelopment in the next generation throughout this area? So, what kind of could be on the table in terms of what types of uses we could look at? We also asked them the fact that we have a bit of a challenge here with the amount of retail space that's occupied. So, if that's going to continue to be a challenge and evolve to less bricks and mortar over the years, how do we repurpose that space? Can we emphasize job development or some other type of land use to fill in in this site over time as we continue to evolve it as a location, as a destination? We also asked them to help us understand some of the issues around some of the complexities here. Obviously, when this project was, when the site was redeveloped, when Cinderella City went away and city center was developed, that was kind of a unitary, you know, plopped it down, a master plan-based development. It all kind of happened at once and it opened in a fairly short order. We know that that's not going to be the case going forward because of how the plan came together initially. We now have multiple ownerships. There's different kind of how the real estate components of this area has kind of aged. Some of it has aged quite rapidly. Others of it are very stable. And so, we have a different situation going forward in terms of the timing of when some of these areas may be ready to be redeveloped. Some of them may be ready now. Others may be ready in the longer-term distant, more distant future. So, we asked those types of questions. The fourth question I recall that we asked was, how do we make it more of a connected place? From both transit, vehicular, bike, pedestrian, how do we weave it together in a way that it could be even a stronger destination than many parts of it are now? The Urban Land Institute in Denver actually recruited the technical advisory panel members. And I would say that in my experience in doing this and having been a member of this organization for many years, they got a really high-quality group of real estate professionals to work with us. I think we were very fortunate to have the caliber of people that spent those few days with us. Prior to their arrival here on-site in early October, we provided an electronic briefing book to them. So, a lot of the background of how this place evolved, kind of where it is now, some of the situations that we're seeing in terms of the opportunities and constraints in this area. So, they had that a couple of weeks beforehand for their review. They did two intensive days here on-site. They were here for probably 12 hours each day and that was consumed with presentations that various staff members from various departments made to them. They did a tour of the area and, as you all recall, they interviewed approximately, actually, I think they did interview 35 community stakeholders, which included all seven of you through that two-day. On the second day, they sequestered themselves to start drafting recommendations and that led to a professional writer taking their recommendations and formulating that into the final report that was attached. So, some conclusions and recommendations that they made. They kind of took a two-part approach to some of these things. They did recommendations that they labeled tweaks and then they did recommendations that they labeled big ideas or big changes. And so, those obviously have different scales of both feasibility, timing, and that type of thing. But, one of the things that I think they realized and made sure that they indicated in the report is that this would probably take a decade or more to realize in terms of a pretty formative transformation of this area because, as I mentioned earlier, we're at various stages of the life cycle on some of the land uses here. But, one of the things they really talked about was this idea of a barbell in catalyzing over time the opportunities that exist on both the east and west ends of the development. We're obviously sitting on the west side. The South Broadway corridor is on the east side. And then Englewood Parkway would be the barbell that would eventually connect the two areas. And so, they weren't specific in terms of develop this many square feet of this or develop this many square feet of that. It really wasn't a market survey or a market analysis. What they did say is do things that would catalyze that place, this place as a place to be, to make sure it stays a community destination point going forward. And that would be a variety of different types of land uses going forward as well. One of the things that I've said to you before that I think is still important as a consideration is that, and one of the reasons why we've shifted our economic development focus is away from that retail as kind of the be-all, end-all. That's very difficult to do anymore. There's just not many communities that are attracting a lot of retail development now and that's just where the industry is going. And so, what can we do to incorporate more employment here? So, there are very strong employment users here, the city being one of them, honestly. But, there are others that we have here now and we want to continue to attract to this area over time. So, maybe what happens is a lot of the traditional retail space maybe becomes employment use over time. That can in turn support some of the other retail, like the restaurants and those types of things that are here now. So, that was one of the things that they talked about in terms of the overall land uses. There wasn't a magic silver bullet in terms of attracting one type of use that would stay in the city center area in good stead for the long term. It's a variety of uses. They also talked about improving connections and I mentioned that earlier. They really think Englewood Parkway could be completely reinvented as what they labeled a Main Street instead of a kind of a byway now and front that with additional uses and land use opportunities going forward. Want to talk a little bit about what we're anticipating in terms of next steps. One of the most important next steps that we've actually already initiated is starting to talk with the property owners in this area. And that will start off in a very general basis, not saying going to them with an explicit plan for their property because that's not generally our role, but starting to open up dialogues with some of these key property owners about where they are where they are in the life cycle of their investment. Do they see anything happening in the next one to three years or five years? Do they want to completely redevelop their property at some point or do they want to revolve it over time? Those are the types of questions and discussions that take an inordinate amount of energy, effort, and initiative and we play an intermediary role. We're the ones that go to them and just say, have you thought about this? These are some of the long-term goals that we've identified for these areas. Can we open up a dialogue that may continue for a period of time to eventually have something positive happen for some of these properties that could possibly be redeveloped in the coming years? As I mentioned, as early as last week, staff met with representatives of one of the key properties in this area and they actually said, you know, we are starting to think about our property and its long-term future and how we want to position it and how we want to have it play a role in this community. And they even went further by saying that they're maybe possibly looking at opportunities for additional investment in the city in general. So, I think that was a really positive way to start off that type of conversation with that specific property owner. And we're going to be doing that with property owners, large and small, throughout this area. I mentioned the fact that that's a pretty intensive process. It's a time-consuming process. It's based on building relationships. And that second point is, is we're in the process right now of recruiting a redevelopment manager and that person will be charged with that leadership of really making those connections between property owners, the development community, facilitating the discussions between the two, understanding where people are in their timelines. And so, that's a very important part of our work program as a department going forward because that's our opportunity for sustaining our economy going forward because, as we all know, we can't grow into green fields and new subdivision-type developments. We have to look inward for our opportunities for sustaining our local economy going forward and that means redevelopment and that means somebody having the real expertise around forging those relationships. The Denver Regional Council of Governments, many, many years ago, designated this area as the first so-called urban center in the metro area and they did some analysis way back when about some of the things that would be happening in these urban centers. They've received a grant, I believe it's a federal grant, I don't know the specifics, of doing some additional projections in five urban centers in the metro area and they've selected this area as a way to look at both population and kind of development density options going out for probably till 2040. And we met with them a couple of weeks ago and thought that it would be a good idea to at least have that information to give us some scenarios that we could share both with you and the community about, from a population perspective and a projection perspective. At least having that from that amount of work that they're going to be doing would be helpful for us. Nothing, obviously, that necessarily needs to be actionable by the city. It's a source of information that we could have in our opinions, informing our opinions and your opinions in terms of how the growth of this area should be shaped for the next decade or even two. South Broadway improvements is obviously a key element of the long-term viability and attractiveness of that important corridor in the community. So, what are the basic and ongoing infrastructure improvements that the city and possibly the property owners would be making there over time to catalyze that area as an area of new reinvestment? This building, obviously, I think there's been pretty clear direction from the city council that the city's occupancy of this building is expected to continue. But, as we approach that seventh or eighth year out from now, when the certificates of participation, the debt on this building will be repaid, we think it would be incumbent on the city council at that time and staff at that time or as we get closer to that time to start to reassess the options or just assess options. Have things changed? Have understandings of what the long-term needs, the space needs of the city, the location of the city's space needs, are any of that, is any of that different? Or do we recommit to this space or does it become part of the redevelopment scenario? I think one of the things that we heard from the panel is this building occupies a pretty key piece of real estate going forward. And so, it represents both an opportunity for the city and if things should change, as I said, as that debt is retired and that amount of time has changed, it may be worth a look in the coming years just to assess the options at that point in time. I can't say this word. Every time I try to say rail-volution, I don't get it right. So, it's one of the more complicated organizations that has ever named itself. But, this is a group of people that come together once a year and do a several-thousand-person conference throughout the country on transit-oriented development and the implications of all of that that it entails. And their conference is coming to Denver in September of this year and they're interested in doing a mobile workshop in the corridor that will include a look at the Evans Station area, Englewood, and Littleton. And I met with some staff members from Littleton just today, actually, to start thinking about what we would want to do in terms of reaching out on a national level and exposing Englewood's opportunities and the issues associated with the future of this area to that conference in the fall of this year. So, we're looking forward to that. I think the more that we get our word out there about this place exists, we're interested in its future. People understand that and there's a little bit more understanding about the opportunities that could be here going forward. Lastly, monitoring of trends and options, trends on our options. I mentioned the fact that retail as a opportunity to be a savior in a space filler is going to be increasingly challenging. But, one of the more interesting things to think about is even something like autonomous vehicles. Now, I've spent a lot of time in my ULI Association nationally hearing various experts coming to us and saying whether or not autonomous vehicles are a good thing or it's the worst thing that's ever going to happen. The traffic will even be worse than it is now on our streets. So, there's still some churn around the whole impact of things like that. But, if you think about it and there are people who are utilizing their personal vehicles less in the future, and again, I'm thinking 10 or 20 years down the road, 60% of this space in the city center area is devoted to surface parking. And so, if that starts to become less of an impact and less of a requirement, do we want to do something about that? Do we want to capture that for other types of uses or other types of opportunities, be it either privately done or some type of public use or that type of thing? So, maintaining our notion of what the trends are in development and community development and making sure that we are continually thinking about how that could possibly impact the next generation or even two of this area is one of the things that we'll also be doing. One of the things that the ULI group recommended was, at some point, developing a master plan for this area. I think our recommendation, at least at this point going forward, is we have a lot of information that's been developed in the last couple of years. There's all of the information that has been crafted related to the Englewood Forward process. This plan, this report itself is really good bones for a master plan for this area. So, if we were to do a master plan for this area, I think one of the things that I would recommend is that we do that in-house. We take a lot of the information that has been gathered and produced for this community in the last, say, three to five years and condense that into how it would look and how it would focus on this area explicitly. So, that's another option that we would do going forward. So, with that, that is a brief, hopefully, summary of what we did with ULI last fall. And with that, be happy to take any comments or questions.
Thank you. Questions from council? Or comments from council?
I'm looking at my document.
Yeah, sorry. I'm kind of like, I'm kind of like looking through them as well to kind of formulate some of my thoughts from some of my questions or comments here as well.
Question of clarification?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think you said, did you say 60% is used for parking?
About 60% of the surface area of this.
I missed that in the report. Where is, is that in here and I just didn't highlight it because somehow it hit me and knew when you said it out loud.
It may be in there. I know they definitely talked about it in terms of their urban designer did a kind of a calculation when he was here. So, whether or not it made in the report, it was definitely something that...
I think that would be important if it isn't to have that. I mean, there's a lot of information here, so I'm just trying to find it.
Sure.
Then the other question besides that is, this new position that you're thinking of, or you've already posted for it? Have you already posted for this? So, how does that, will that position report to you? How does it relate to other staff in your development department?
Sure.
And to Darren?
Yeah, it would report to me.
I think it's a great idea, by the way, so...
The position will report to me. It is analogous to the Economic Development Manager position, but it is different in its scope. The Economic Development Manager position is really focused on our economic development efforts, working with our existing business community, future employers and other businesses that may be interested in relocating to Englewood and administering our revamped program, our grant and our loan programs and our training programs and working with our partners, primarily the Small Business Development Center and the Small Business Administration. The redevelopment person is really a real estate-focused person that will be working primarily on the development types that would be housing all the stuff that Darren would recruit to. So, it's, as I said earlier, it's working with the underlying property owners and the development community about getting that stuff developed so that those types of uses and those types of activities and businesses that we're trying to attract or retain can find homes in those areas. That's the kind of the distinction between the two that we've drawn and how they would be working very closely together, but drawn along those lines.
Other questions or comments?
I think it was really exciting to have, you know, Urban Land take a look at this. I was really pleased to take part in the process and I think they came forward with a lot of good information and recommendations. I guess I'm a little confused, though, you know, and I know you just highlighted, you know, where we're going to kind of go from here with next steps. You know, it's still a little bit ambiguous to me or, you know, what exactly we'd be doing as far as stakeholders. You know, I know we had our, you know, we had an initial stakeholder meeting with them year and a half ago, two years ago, almost two years ago now. Is this a continuation in your mind of that process or is this something different than that?
Well, I obviously, I don't have the context of what you did. If you did a group meeting with people and you went over some ideas for the future, I would shift that into one-on-one sustained, consistent outreach to the underlying property owners and the developers who are active in this area and the region. And the idea is to marry the two because oftentimes the property owners, we have, we, in this area, there are a whole range of different types of property owners. We have major national institutional investors down to individual owners. And so, how do we create a strategy to have ongoing discussions with them at their level? And to me, the best way to do that is one-on-one because they're much more forthright with what they're actually thinking. And that's why it's important to have this position, whoever's in this position, build that level of trust with people. Because in my, in my experience of having done this for 20-plus years, you'd be surprised at how easy it is to actually build trust with folks and they will let you know where they are if they understand that it will be held confidential, that you'll be willing to work with them and go forward on that basis. So, we see a lot of individual contact and one-on-one working going forward rather than kind of y'all-come meetings, which are a little bit more general in scope.
I think the strategy you just highlighted really makes a ton of sense to kind of advance the ball on this. I think, you know, group meetings make sense for a certain type of context or, you know, if we have kind of a larger idea for the area or whatever. But, I agree, you know, right now pragmatically, I think it makes a lot of sense to be building relationships with these folks one-on-one and dealing with these property owners on an individual basis at this point. So, I do appreciate those comments. Councilman Martinez?
Thank you for presenting this. This is really exciting to kind of start thinking about. Do you have any idea when this new position may be filled? I mean, could it be six months, a year?
No, it closed last Wednesday. We have 41 applicants and we're, I'm going through the initial review of those applicants this week and hopefully, the operative part of the selection process will happen in March.
Wow. Okay, great. And then I had a question as it relates to, there's a comment in here about that the city center is a hotel desert. Can you talk to me a little bit more about that and how, I guess, the, do we have a real need for a hotel and a conference center? Or is it, is it just kind of one of the ideas on the table or is, I know we don't have anything like that, so obviously, we need to fill that gap maybe?
I think the panel, as I recall, indicated that among all of the types of uses that we could consider, a hotel certainly should be on the table. Now, the challenge with the hotel is kind of, how many kind of institutional room nights could they get? And so, the hospitals are a key market, but they're a price-sensitive market. And so, you have that balance between what these major institutional users are willing to take in terms of the number of room nights at what kind of rate versus everybody else. And I think that's been the challenge of that kind of, is it a no-brainer use? Not entirely. So, the market is still kind of trying to figure out. But, when you draw a circle around Englewood in terms of a, of a kind of a destination three-star or up hotel, just intuitively based on our geography and some of the access that we have here at Santa Fe and Hampden, it makes sense. I think a conference center component, I'm a little bit biased on that as a professional because I've been through that in two other communities. If you wanted to underwrite the operation of a conference center, that might have an opportunity to have happen, but conference centers never pay for themselves, especially the ones that are smaller in scale, which would be here. So, I'd be a little bit more cautious about a conference center as an option. But, I think the more that we have discussions with property owners about the opportunity for a hotel development here, I think that would be a big upside for this area and it would attract additional probably investment in the surrounding area. That's kind of, again, an ongoing discussion we would have, particularly with the institutional players around here. The two hospitals would really drive that, both not only in the location, but hopefully, some of the business. If they can commit to more room nights at a certain rate, then the hotel developers would probably have a much higher interest than they traditionally have until this point.
We've had some several groups, I think, look at hotels. You remember there was the group who was looking at the Jefferson Hotel on Clarkson and Hampden-ish and a couple of years back, and I want to say they did a demand study and linked with the hospitals and determined that there wasn't enough demand at that time to build that facility. Obviously, some groups throughout the city think differently, so, you know, I think there's still some hope for that potential use.
So, did ULI have access to that kind of data that we already have done?
They had access to the folks at the hospitals directly in terms of talking to them about that as an opportunity. They met with executives of both of the hospitals.
They didn't have that information?
They didn't have a report in front of them that I recall.
Probably not, is my guess, yeah. Other questions or comments? Talk to me a little more about Broadway since we've got some time here, about South Broadway and recommendations. Obviously, we have our South Broadway 3,400-block plan sort of coming forward for a study session here with the council relatively soon. Do you think some of these ideas or themes would impact what we're seeing coming forward?
Absolutely. I think there's a couple of components about Broadway. One is the city side. What leverage does the city have? What, what leverage does the city have and does the city want to employ to make South Broadway a more attractive destination, not only for people who want to go there and experience it, but the investment community who would actually commit to real estate improvements? And so I think if the, if the market stays where it is and we don't have a complete fall off the cliff like we did in 2008 and 2009, then my expectation would be that a lot of the activity that we've seen north of us in the South Broadway corridor would start to be more attractive in the heart of Englewood. I was at a separate Urban Land Institute meeting before the holidays and, actually just after the holidays, and they started to talk about the fact that some of the so-called hot areas have priced people out, they've become pretty active, pretty busy. Where are the next areas? And without ascribing it to Englewood per se, both South Santa Fe corridor and the South Broadway corridor were mentioned by some very key players in the development community as a location for people starting to take a look at that next area. And so if we position ourselves through these, some of the infrastructure elements that you've been talking about making, we provide that much level of attract, that much more level of attractiveness to the private investment community to take on some of these new projects that we would, we would definitely want to support in the South Broadway corridor because one of the ways that we maintain a viable and sustainable urban storefronts out there is to have more people interested in being there. And that's, that's, you know, kind of what the city does in terms of laying some of the groundwork and where the private sector is coming in in terms of their investment capital based on market demand.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. I, you know, I agree with a lot of what you said there, that the South Broadway corridor and the South Santa Fe corridor are huge opportunities for us moving forward. Obviously, we have committed some funds to, you know, improvement of the 3400 block. You know, is there any sense in your mind of what types of improvements or what types of things that would be most valued or appreciated?
Well, I think, you know, one of the things that I think we're, we're finding out in terms of looking at the South Broadway areas, there's, there's a lot of building blocks that need to be reinvented and reinvested. And so some of the infrastructure out there, the lighting, the electric, electrical, those, those types of building blocks, if we can make them in that area and kind of prove it there, my, my hope and my anticipation would be is we create that, that level of, of energy in the core, it will start to radiate outward. And I know that the community has had a little bit up and down track record of partnering with the businesses in that area in terms of shared outcome. You've had a downtown development authority, there's been an improvement district. I'm not saying that we would pull the trigger on that this or next year, but if we start to see this types of new investment coming to this area, I think it might be worthwhile having conversation with property owners going forward in terms of a shared outcome because one of the things that we do know is the city can't do everything. A full, complete Cadillac streetscape per block will run about a million dollars. And so if we start to get this catalytic effect, if there's more investment, if there's some things, some initial things that the city does to set the table for the, to attract that type of investment, if that starts to take on a life of its own, then we may have the opportunity, I can't guarantee it, but we may have the opportunity to have a different discussion with the property owners going forward than maybe has been had in the past.
You know, I totally agree. Appreciate those comments as well. I, you know, I think that, you know, if we can show a good example with this funding on the 3400 that could show a template or example for what could be possible, I think that that would bring some of the adjacent property owners who would say, hey, we value that, we're willing to pay for that, but we need to make sure, in my mind, to get this right in order to be able to demonstrate what is possible. You know, do you feel like you have the resources enabled in order to be able to bring forward some of those, you know, unique kind of design elements that might make it uniquely desirable? You know, speaking with some of my colleagues in the Metro Mayors and the Denver Regional Council of Governments, they actually, you know, I've heard of many suggestions about looking at different types of streetscape. Pinterest was brought up last time we chatted, but, you know, obviously the impact of perception is hugely impacted by some of these design elements. Wouldn't you agree or no?
Yeah, I think it's all part of it. And so I think one of the things is, is kind of interesting is there's, there are type of developments that want to be those pioneers and they're less reliant on plugging into a completely evolved urban landscape. And so for a period of time, based on the city's resources, maybe that's kind of how we play it, is that we're attracting that, that new investment. Then there's kind of a, a level of participational level of interest to take it to that next step because I think it's, you know, you'll hear, we'll come back to you, as you said, Mayor, soon about South Broadway improvements. There's only so much that the city can do at any one time in terms of creating that environment. So how do we create as much as we can, attract the type of people who can have a vision for the future? That's a big piece of it. And that's why this redevelopment person, we want to have somebody that really understands this area, the community, and kind of can sell that, not sell it, but convey that vision to people that feel the confidence to invest in the community. And if we have that kind of catalytic effect, maybe we can leverage more, more funding in the future going forward to start to build on what, what we do initially.
Thank you, sir. Other questions or comments from council?
You know, obviously we've got some additional time here. I guess, you know, if you want to get off this agenda item, perhaps we could move on to some choice, if, if members have some choice before we move on to our next meeting.
Thanks for your time.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I would recommend we do the agenda.
Okay, yeah, we can look ahead for, for next week. I think that's a good idea, Eric, if you've got that.
Yes, sir, I do. And I'm glad that you were asking the questions about the South Broadway corridor. Staff met today and besieged us to get more time to make sure that this is well done. And so what they proposed to do is to bring it to you on the March 27th meeting. So what you have before you tonight for the February 27th meeting right now is expense reduction analyst project update. And as you recall, council entered into an agreement with ERA to, to look at several different categories of spending that the city has done and is currently looking to come back with a report. They have three categories in which they've already found about $200,000 in savings, which is pretty decent. These are smaller categories, but it just shows again the focused efforts and work this group has been able to do to help us. We're going to have Slate Communications come next week and talk to you about a number of things, notwithstanding getting the Englewood magazine going, talking about special events, talking about State of the City, talking about all the things that were, are within their scope of work. As I stated, we are desirous of having the South Broadway corridor moved to March. And in its place, we want to do the monthly financial report because that's something that, you know, should have been on, on the agenda to talk about. January's performance, January was a very good month. Impact fee study and implementation discussion is slated for next Monday, Monday evening. And again, the nexus of that was the council goal-setting session a year ago about this time. That was an idea or a concept that came about that merits some further discussion and to study. There would also be a budgeting for community goals review. In this, this particular meeting, we are desirous of bringing forth a means with which to engage the public. So you're going to see from Mark Wolfe, our Strategy and Innovations Officer, a tool called Balancing Act that he wants to demonstrate for you, that we want to go out into the public and gain input on the community goals so that that gives you further empirical data and information by which to make some decisions rather than indiscriminately perhaps deciding to cut programs that may be of importance to, to residents. We'll also have a PIO update and then council policy procedure review. I think Acting City Attorney Comer is going to lead the council through those aspects of the charter, policy, council policy manual ordinances and policies that relate to how council communicates and relates to each other. This emanated from your, your last, last study session meeting. Looking forward, March 6, we are going to again have another study session before the regular meeting. And this is an important meeting as well because we want to bring forward the 2015 international codes. So this includes all the international building codes, international fire code. And as you may recall, some of you, our agreement with Denver Fire required us to adopt it within this specific timeframe and this is that timeframe. However, we can ask for additional time if we want to work things out with respect to how the 2015 international code impacts the city of Englewood specifically. For example, there are requirements in the new code for houses to be sprinkled at certain square feet and, and that's a decision that previous councils have said, we don't want to see that imposed upon our residents because of its, it's an additional cost. But those are all policy issues in which you as council can, can work through at, at that meeting. Time permitting, that night also at that same study session, there would be an update on the strategic plan. If, if there's not time, then I can do at the end of the meeting under manager's choice. And at this point in time, it's a little bit early for us to kind of forecast the business items that are coming on the 6th, but yeah, we'll, we'll try to do a better job of getting those to you next, next Monday night on the 27th.
Thank you. On the impact fee study and implementation, do you guys feel like you guys have data from surrounding jurisdictions so we can get an idea of what the competing areas really look like so we make sure we don't price ourselves out or something?
Yeah, we're one of the few communities that doesn't have impact fees, frankly. We only have a park and loo fee for parks and recreation. However, that's not really structured according to the impact fee statutes. But yeah, we can, we can explain that, what other communities are charging for impact fees, but it's a little bit difficult right now because we haven't had somebody come in and study all of our capital projects and needs that would really be driven by or through an impact fee. Obviously, an impact fee is, is something that you make sure that development pays its fair share of the proportionate use of infrastructure and capital infrastructure, made me roads, parks, police, all that kind of thing that impacts, is an impact from their development. So that's what will be discussed next week. But yeah, we, we do have data that we can share, but it's just a little bit obtuse right now because we don't have a study done.
Okay, no, it's great. Thank you. Budgeting for community goals review, is this the best next step in your mind of the, you know, whatever we're now calling the priority-based budgeting? I've already forgotten, I apologize.
No, you're good. It's, yeah, the budgeting for community goals.
Thank you.
I think that, I recognize that council really wants to dig into the budget and, and start looking at programs and we can do that. But again, I think one of the biggest things that you're going to want to focus on is what are, what are your constituents saying about what's important to them? And so we really want to get that empirical data and take it, not have people come here, but get out into the community and do workshops where either it's small group or large group, wherever shows up can actually vote on, how would you spend the dollars? Percentage, if you had 100%, what would you do across the eight categories of goals? From good governance to, you know, safe and healthy community to sustainable natural environment, all those things, where would you put the money? So that you can have, then we can look, come back and look at the resource alignment diagnostic tool that actually has all the, the city's programs and services in it. You can see how they've scored and you can say, listen, this, these quartile four programs, the city, the citizens like him, or these quartile four programs, the citizens don't, so cut them. But I think before you make some big decisions on how you're going to align the resources with the budget that we have, available budget that we have, you need some input. And I do think that's important. Obviously, the other thing that's important, too, is to look at some bigger questions. And I think I raised this last week, but the biggest question I think that council could be looking at is where are we with our revenues? Because in some instances, we're not collecting, not even close to what it costs to provide services. And I think council needs to weigh in and say, either we're going to always collect 100% or 80%, what's that threshold number? Because in some instances for parks and recreation programs, we're collecting only 20% of the cost of what it provides to do a program. Well, why are we doing that? Should we continue because you believe that there is a, some sort of benefit to the residents and you're willing to underwrite that? But I think you need to understand that level, too, and participate in that discussion to say, listen, here's the level of, of recapture that we want to see for programs and also ensuring that we're not pricing ourselves out of the, of the marketplace, too. So there, there are those types of policy-level questions that need to be examined.
How long do you anticipate that feedback process coming back from the citizens taking? And would it make more sense for us to have some of these macro-level conversations to make sure things are the way we want them before we go asking for feedback?
Yeah, and we're open as staff to, to getting that. We just didn't want to put the, a cart before the horse because we could bring the RAD tool next week. But in doing that, where you're looking at programs that scored in a quartile four, again, if you're going to suggest get rid of those programs or services, you need to remember that programs and services, the biggest cost of it is the, the cost that comes on two legs is people. And so we can reallocate those people to another area, but you may wish to say, let's see what the public says before we start to make those moves.
So right now, though, without our feedback in that process, you would simply designate all quartile fours as getting feedback that may potentially be removed? Again, I guess I just worry about, you know, thinking about how we're presenting this to the public for feedback because if that's the case, you know, I'm not so sure. I think we should take a look at those quartile fours before. So that was my thought, if council has any feedback on that. Again, my thought was, hey, before we put this out, let's make sure we're comfortable with where we are.
Sure. Yeah, and we can do that. We can start to bring those, those to you. Again, it's similar to, not dissimilar to a line item budget. We want to talk in generalities about the importance of the community goals or the, as you called them before, the community results. If we start to, to let you get into the programs and you're like, well, let's just cut, you know, police opening people's doors if they've locked themselves out of cars or let's eliminate the Zumba program or Step aerobics because nobody does it anymore, that's, that's great. But those are things that we as staff should be doing as an administrative level, but we, there are those macro, I think, policy-level questions that need to be looked at. You know, again, the revenue recapture for one, the fee structure, I mean, how, how much of a, how hard do you want staff to, to push to, to obtain fees for services that we provide that we may not do right now?
You know, my personal feels that you should probably walk us through the structure, walk us through, you know, what we have and let us sort of help you identify what we feel like are issues and then, and then we can put it out there, is my thought.
Gotcha. Yeah, and, and we can fully, you know, gin up the, the resource diagnostic alignment tool next week, the RAD tool, and show you where these programs shake out, for sure.
How were you going to do it?
I think the thing to do is there's a, there's a program that we'd like to demo next week to show you what we're intending to do. And it's called Balancing Act. It's used by a couple of other communities here in Colorado. Wheat Ridge, for example, who's also a priority-based budgeting methodology community. I think a few states actually use this tool and the federal government actually uses Balancing Act as well to, to show people where their money goes. So you put in your annual income before taxes and it breaks it down and says, here's how much goes to defense, social security, all those types of programs. We're not going to do that. We're tailoring it to, here's how much, here are the different goals that we've set, the eight, eight results. Where would you, where would you prioritize your money, your, by percentage? And then we would use that data by coming back and saying, here, as a, how many participants participated in this? We're looking at individual IP addresses so that individuals can't sit in their home and keep filling it out and say, cut everything but the cops or, you know, cut everything but parks. We'd know one vote per household. Bring that data back and say, here, here's how many participants we had, here's where, where the citizenry are saying they want to have, you know, their monies allocated. And we would also go to different, set up some community meetings, which we would hope to knock them out in like a month, just go to different places, different schools or wherever people are willing to receive us and go in and, and use the, I think you've seen us use the clickers, the voting clickers before, that people can actually vote real-time for certain things. We'd walk people through that and get some real-time data that could be used again by, by the council in making some decisions.
Thank you. Councilor Russell?
Actually, one thing that has been very discouraging to me is that for a year, we talked about priority-based budgeting and we never really got down to the nuts and bolts. There are certain things that we need as a city to exist. And if we don't have those, and we've never gotten down to define what those are, it's not what the public thinks we need, it's what we need to exist. And personally, I feel like we haven't really been given what those priorities are. And I don't think we should be reaching out to the community. Absolutely, the community is going to have to pay 100% of the rec center if we can't meet those things that we need to continue to exist. And so I'm, I'm really frustrated that we are changing the definitions and changing all of the words. I want to understand what the priority is.
Sure. And councillor, don't, I appreciate the frustration you have. I understand where you want to come from, but we're not changing the definitions of anything. All we're doing is changing it so that people understand these are the goals that the community has initially set. These are the eight-goal areas. They haven't changed. It's good governance, it's safe and healthy community, it's, you know, natural envi, sustainable natural environment, well-orderedly development. Those are all the same. What I think you're wanting to do is to say, hey, can we look at the, I think the charter and say, what is it we're supposed to be doing and making sure those programs are in there? If you want to go that austere, if you will, of these are the things, the only things that we're going to do and we're going to not have all these parks and rec programs, that's, that's the, that's the 30,000-foot policy question that, you know, we want to help you get to. But if you go there immediately, it's just like saying that we're not going to have dogs in our parks anymore. And, and we're, you know, we're very sensitive to that because we've heard some people saying, well, okay, now you've, you got rid of the fire department, you're going to get rid of the police department, you're going to, those are, those are things that, that aren't, that aren't... that, that aren't, that aren't accurate. There's a lot of rumors circulating, and we want to be able to help you get to the point where you have data that you can say, yes, these are the things that are required by charter, these are the programs that we're spending money on, but, you know, perhaps we do need to spend some more time on, on the programs that, that are there today, so you can see those, and we can dig into those. But I think what I'm trying to suggest is to, you know, keep your powder dry with respect to making cuts until you actually get a sense and feel from what is important to the community.
And with that, I just would like to say, I want to make sure that we have the resources to provide those things we have to have, because if we don't, it doesn't matter if we offer to do everything for the community.
No, I get, I understand where you're coming from.
The council needs to go through the exercise that you're asking the public to go through first, I guess, is, I think, the key. I think we need to have some basic understanding of, you know, of again, what we're doing and why, and what are, what are the moving pieces so that we have an understanding of that. I think some of the newer members, I think you're hearing from, have not had an opportunity, really, to be able to do that because of our abbreviated budgeting process last year. And so, I think that's why it's, it's critical to really just walk us through it first before we do too much with the public. You know, thinking more about, I think Linda's question, which was, you know, how are you going to do it? If it's, you know, hey, you know, we've got these eight outcomes, and we've got $40 million, and how do you want to, you know, allocate those, and it's that macro level, and we're not talking about programs, then I feel like it's okay to kind of think about sending that to the public. But if we're talking about programs, I think the council needs to have, you know, that's why I asked you about the fourth quartal programs, and whether or not those would be submitted to the public as potentially cut. And you said yes, but that's, that's why it concerned me, I guess.
No, we're not, we're not sending programs, just like we wouldn't send, you know, programs out of the chute to the council. You have to have that, that higher level look at the, what are the eight, what are our community goals? What are we trying to achieve? And first and foremost. So, and actually, those community goals, or priority budgeting results as they were formerly known as, those haven't changed. Those did emanate from, you know, these are all things that are in the charter. These are all things that were important during the comprehensive plan process. These were all things that were important in the National Citizen Survey. So, that's, that's where that, you know, those, those came from originally, just to be as a, as a reminder. We can retool for next week. I'm happy to have Kathy and Jenny Nolan come forth and bring forth all those quartile four programs, and you can start to look at those. And we can also have the council walk through, and you can do the voting exercise as Balancing Act, if we can, you know, be prepared for that next week, but.
Will you tell us, I mean, I'm open to your suggestion and what you think is a logical way to step this group through, who hasn't had that opportunity yet, to understand our budget and our finances and what some of the options might look like. And so, I'm open to what you think is the initializing, initializing step. If you don't mind, I'll go to Councilmember Olson, and I'll come back to Councilmember Russell.
Thank you. I'm, I am concerned, too, that we're not going to talk about revenue. And somewhere in this mix, and I realize that that isn't necessarily what this process takes you through, but we have to start talking about revenue. I came, I was at the meeting last week for the floodplain, folks impacted by the floodplain, and, and many of them are crying for some more revenue to take care of this. And they're asking, why don't we have a head tax? And many businesses were there saying, I, you know, and I thought, holy moly, let me get under the table. But I, Doug was there. There were many people there, and they're all like, yeah, why don't we do that? And I thought, well, because y'all voted it down back in whenever it was. But I, I think there are other opportunities besides that, but that ought, that ought to be one, that we keep, we looking at various ways, because some of these things simply have just gone up in cost and not to the same level that our incomes have. And so, what are we going to do?
Right. You know, and revenue is something that we're prepared to bring forth, too, but it's like, how much can you consume in one night? This is, this is a big issue.
No, I agree, but I'd like to know that that's somewhere down there.
Oh, yeah. The revenue, the five-year revenue projection, and we're retooling it, again, based on what's going on in the economy. I mean, you've seen interest rates creep up quite a bit, and that's having an adverse impact on a number of things. For people trying to acquire housing, we're still seeing a pretty voracious appetite, if you will, for people who are doing construction and things like that. But some of this is going to have a chilling effect on our, on our revenue. Sales tax growth in January was very, very strong. People may be redeeming gift certificates or something, I'm not sure, after the holidays, but that, that's a positive thing. But we're hoping that, we're not seeing that that may be a continued trend. I mean, one month does not a trend make, as Jenny Nolan keeps telling me. But we'll look at, you know, see where February is. But yeah, revenue is something we have to look at as well. And that's where I want to come back and say, council, did you realize that Public Works is achieving this percentage of revenue recapture? Parks and Rec is doing this percentage, and I hear exactly what you're saying. I have my own beliefs in it, but we need the council as a group to say, thou shalt bring in whatever the cost is to provide the service, that much money to cover it. We need to know that.
But that's where citizens need to know about that process.
Sure.
And realize that these programs don't come at a, you know, they're not subsidizing free. We can't keep doing that. Some of them, they're going to say they're important, but they, they need to understand where the money comes from, where other opportunities are for.
Sure.
For getting funds, not just sales tax.
And the one other thing that I wanted to add, and I, did the Budget Advisory Committee walk through the whole thing from the very beginning with you? Because I got the feeling from talking with some of the people on the Budget Advisory Committee, they had far more information than council had.
Interesting. Well, and that, there may be that perception on their part because of the fact that's their sole focus, is budget. And they asked us a lot of questions, and they asked for a lot of documentation. So, that very well may be the case, because that's their sole function and purpose. However, as you've been able to see from what they've been doing, they've been zeroing in more on issue briefs. So, I think there's another issue brief coming from them with respect to police department and how the police department's funded. And matter of fact, today, earlier, they had a meeting talking about some of the topics that they're wanting to address as a group and provide some value to you as council. They've zeroed in on, they've done, essentially, they've reviewed five of the city's departments, mainly the larger departments, Public Works, Community Development, Parks and Recreation, Police, and I forget the fifth one, Utilities. But what they want to do is be able to provide you, as council, some issue briefs and said, hey, we've examined this, and we believe that you should advocate for more police, and here's how we think you should fund it, officers, that is, or as far as, you know, parks and recreation goes, we believe that you shouldn't be investing in additional parks because you can't afford to fully maintain those that you have now. Those are the types, that's the type of value-added thing that the, the Budget Advisory Committee wants to provide to the city council.
You know, hopefully, we've gotten some feedback on that. We can kind of discuss this a little bit more next week. We've got another minute or two. Did you want to make another comment here? I do want to discuss a little bit about the policy review. Councilmember Berentone.
We're not having a policy discussion here. We're supposed to be talking about what we wanted for the.
I'm talking about the agenda item.
I'm sorry?
I'm talking about the agenda item for the February 27th.
Did you just change it on me?
No, I'm just saying, right, you know, right now, we've kind of been discussing the.
Budget.
Yes.
Which I haven't commented on yet, which I'm going to make.
You're welcome to do that. And all I'm saying is, at this point, you know, after that, I'd like to switch gears to the policy review.
I'll wait for you.
No, I'm, I'm saying I'll wait for you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
We're supposed to be discussing what we're going to put on the agenda.
Yes.
And I think we're having a policy, I mean, a budget discussion now, and I don't, I think it's kind of going a little far. I do agree with Councilmember Russell that the amount of information that the Budget Advisory Committee asked for, we have, we asked for. And what we got last meeting was a change of process and new tools without that kind of information going forward. So, whatever they got for them last year, and then we need to do it a little bit more. We are six weeks into this, and we're already making huge, major changes, and we haven't even gotten the first month's report. So, I really think it's important, what Councilmember Russell is asking for, the information be provided. And if, if we didn't ask the right questions, if the Budget Advisory Committee asked better questions and then got a plethora of information, I'd like to have that information provided at, at the next meeting. Before we start delving out to ask the public for anything, that we do that process, like what you said, that that information is available at the study session. And if we need to knock some other things out of there to have a more in-depth conversation, I think it's, it's already showing in what we're being asked to do tonight, that it's important that we do that as soon as possible. That's all I had to say.
You know, I do generally agree. I think we did a really good job of briefing the Budget Advisory Committee when they came on. You know, keep in mind, they've been in existence for what, two and a half years, somewhere in that range. So, you know, all the, you know, information they've accumulated has been over a longer period of time than this council's been together. And so, you know, one, they, they started from a very macro level, and then they started getting individual briefings from each department. And so, the police would come in one day, and one of their meeting would just be about PD operations. And then, you know, the next meeting would be Public Works. And Public Works came and gave a description of what they do, and where their funding sources are, and what their expenses are, and that kind of thing. And I felt like that gave them a very good handle on city operations and the budget itself.
And Mayor, the council actually received that exact same information during the budget process this past fall. Yes, you did, councillor. The council received that exact same information when we did the presentation of each department, saying, here's what we do, here's how we're structured, here's where your money goes, and here are some of our top programs. You didn't, you didn't, they got the exact same info.
Thank you. I would like to move on, Mr. Comer, just briefly, just, I think the council's intent on the review of policy is just to simply review the policy first. I think we need to have just an understanding of what does our policy stay, and let us kind of have some discussions on how we interpret that, or if, let us kind of issue spot, if you will, I think, as we go through that. Is that kind of a, a fair assessment of what the council wants to do? Seeing a lot of head nodding, so, but I just, you know, just want to prep you for that. And, you know, my thought is that, you know, we'll probably only get a little ways, you know, into it. And so, I don't know if you want to just start from the beginning, you know, first page one of our policy manual, and just go, you know, from page one to the last page. But we'll get as far as we can during that study session, my thought is, and then we'll pick it up at a later date. So, again, I think it's important that we have some placeholders for this policy conversation moving forward. I noticed there was a little bit of a gap, and it kind of picks back up in April. But, you know, into May, we're going to need this, because even Ms. Brown comes on, we'll be continuing this, hopefully, in a more substantive manner after we've kind of identified some issues in the first few meetings. Everybody okay with that? Cool. We're going to go ahead and recess here, or end this meeting, and pick back up in about five next door.